I'm gonna start with roll call of the members. Please answer in the affirmative when your name is called. Matthew Allison.
I'm here.
Tanner Cole.
I'm here.
Matthew Brenner.
I'm here.
All right, and I do not see Paula Bertram or Eric Torgerson. If Eric, that's you on the iPad, just shoot me a chat. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, it is be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, and this meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. All town facilities are currently closed to the public with the exception of 10 to 2 Monday through Thursday. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order which can be found posted on the town's website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting of the planning board will feature public comment. For this meeting of the planning board of... For this meeting, the planning board is convening by Zoom video conference as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Using a smartphone, tablet, or computer, go to zoom.us and enter the meeting ID number, or call 888-475-4499. The meeting ID for this meeting is 86... I'm sorry, start again. Meeting ID for this meeting is 896-082-02383. Please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording, kept in perpetuity, and played repeatedly on YouTube. At this point, I will pass this over to the chair. I did see Mrs. Bertram pop in. Paula, can you hear us?
I can.
Excellent. Thank you. There is someone on an iPad. Are you someone who intends to speak? And if so, would you please just identify yourself so I can change your name so everyone watching knows who you are? If you're just here to watch, that's not a problem. All right, they don't seem to be there. Sorry, Matt, go ahead.
Okay, no problem. So we have called to order. What is it, 6:35?
Yes, it is.
So we have... I want to make sure that we don't forget to talk about the G.I. hours for conservation. But at the end, right?
Yeah, we can do that in the board comments concerns.
Okay. So, public comment. Is there any public comment not to do with the public hearing tonight? No hands? All right, I guess we'll jump right into it. We have an A&R plan for 452 Northfield Road.
Good evening, everybody. Jamie Rowe from Women of Bingham Associates. And the piece of property we're here talking about this evening is an A&R plan for two lots and remaining land. The property is 452 Northfield Road. And it is Assessors Parcel 3933. What we're basically doing, actually, do you want to share the screen? You want me to put the plan on or?
You can't share a screen, so... There we go.
Perfect. Excellent. Excellent. So we have two public ways, Holman Street and Northfield Road. We're creating two lots, Lot 12A and Lot 13A. Lot 12A has 47,511 square feet, a little more than an acre. 13A has 40,054, a little more, well, a little under an acre, but it's a Lunenburg acre, 40,000 square feet minimum. The zoning district that we're relying on is Residence A, 40,000 square feet of lot area, 100 feet of frontage, 175 feet of lot width. And both lots meet that. We do have a zoning line outlining in Residence A located on Lot 12A, so to speak. And we have a note on the plan that the planning board already endorsed an A&R plan on this property back in 2006, showing the zoning line and lots in this whole area, then and now owned by Carol Kowski. So with that said, all lots meet minimum frontage, minimum lot area, lot width, et cetera. The remaining land for Carol Kowski at 452 Northfield, 4.9... Sorry, 4.795 acres, and the remaining frontage is approximately 564 feet. On the A&R plan, we do show an existing building on the Kowski remaining land, and we meet the setbacks 31 feet from all property lines. And we also show the approximate location of an existing leach field, which we pulled off of an as-built plan that was done for Carol Kowski, which we gave a copy to the Board of Health today as well. And that was done in 2005 as well. So there's no issues with our septic system all well. I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding the A&R plan.
I actually, I only have one question. The building official zoning, they state that it has to be built in Residence A. Is that simply because of the lot, the area?
So I think what the building official is saying, he would like to see the house located in Residence A, and that's our intention, Matt. But the zoning code does provide for this type of scenario where the location of the house and the improvements can't extend over the zoning line by 20 feet. So we certainly intend to have a conversation with the building inspector at that time and make sure everything's right in everybody's mind.
Very good. That was the only comment that I had. Anybody else? All right. Okay, then I guess if there's no more comments, then... I'm sorry?
I had a question on this, Mr. Chair. Do we have a plan that shows the topography?
We do.
I'm just a little bit familiar with that area, and I want to say that the access coming off the road, I'm not sure exactly where it falls relative to these lots, but there is like an ledge there, and it seems like...
So this piece of property is pretty flat. You can see a gradient that basically goes from Holman Street all the way to the back, very slight. But these lots have already been tested, easy access from Holman Street, completely easy access, no problems whatsoever.
Okay, we just don't have that plan, or at least I didn't get any sort of topography in my packet, so.
It was in the email that Marjorie sent last week.
And I have a hard copy of it in my packet.
I do as well.
Do, okay.
And just so you understand, the topography shown on this plan is on-the-ground topography. It's not quad topo, so it's certainly reliable.
Okay. I didn't ask about the access to the existing house. Is that off of Northfield?
It is, yep.
So that's going to remain unchanged?
Unchanged. Everything is unchanged with respect to the remaining land. Correct.
So I'll flip in and go ahead.
Does that access, where it's not shown on the plan, does that meet all the setback requirements?
Yep, so the two requirements, Tanner, that we have to show on the A&R plan are simply the remaining land area, which is 4.795 acres, well in excess of the 40,000 square foot minimum. And then the frontage for this zone is 100 feet, and the remaining frontage for this remaining land is 564 feet, so well in compliance. Yep.
Very good. And then just one more point of note is that Northfield is a scenic road, so both the lots are intended to be accessed off of Holman?
They both are, yes. That's the way we're designing them. Yep.
Anybody else? I would take a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I would motion for us to endorse the A&R plan for 452 Northfield Road.
Very good. And Paula, second? That's great. Okay, we'll have to do roll call. All in favor? Tanner Cole?
Aye.
Paula Bertram?
Aye.
Matthew Brenner?
Aye.
And is Mr. Torgerson with us yet?
I do not see him.
Okay, so let the record state that he's not here to vote. Excellent. Very good. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you very much, guys. Adam, when can I pick up the Mylar?
When they come in and sign it.
Okay.
So what they do is they come in at their convenience and sign it, and then we'll give you a call and let you know.
Couple of weeks.
It could be as quickly as tomorrow. It could be as long as a couple of weeks.
Fantastic. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so now we'll have a continuation of a public hearing, so we don't need to read the... I hope, because I don't think I have it.
No, you don't need to read it.
Okay, good. So first, 361 Massachusetts Avenue, Bright Farms, continued from 9:14.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for giving us this opportunity to come back and make some progress before we try to complete all the filings. This allows to get a few things knocked off our list. We have sort of a master list, but I'll just tick off the things I'm hoping we can go through tonight, and I'll try to be expeditious about it. So the first one is we have... There was some concern, I think, totally reasonable concern about view corridors, potential view from the neighboring, the neighbors' houses. So we have just an initial drawing that will show a little bit of the grade change, and I'll go over that in a second. We have parking. There was a parking count issue that we needed to correct. I want to talk a little bit about photrics, a little bit about hydrants, and the fire planning. I'm going to update you guys on the wetlands and the cons comm. I have a question about signage, and then I want to ask some support for our... The way we want to handle landscape screening. So that's my list. Again, we have, we owe a lot more. I totally recognize that. We have a long list from Mr. Walsh at Graves Engineering, and some of that stuff is coming, I think, this week. I'll talk about schedule a little bit, too. So that's on my list, and if it's okay, I'll just go one by one. Is that all right?
Sure.
I don't know what's on the screen. That's our old... That's the wrong...
This is what came in. This is what you had sent earlier this month.
Oh, interesting. Okay, did you guys want to talk about?
I just put up what I had.
Oh, okay, I apologize. No, that's just a follow-up on... No, that's all right. We can come back to that if it's relevant. I didn't know we were going to talk about the process.
I would go through your list and open that information.
Okay. No, I was... Part of the reason I was reacting is I actually kept that slide title for our presentation on wetlands this week, and I was a little embarrassed that I still had the process water recycling opening. So anyway. So to start with, the... Is it possible for me to share my screen, or do I need to send stuff to you, Adam?
Yeah, it's a... It's set for us. It's only hosts.
Okay.
You want to shoot me a quick email? I can put it up.
Yep, I'm going to send you some attachments, and we'll talk about them. In the meantime, before those get to you, I can cover the parking issue. So there was, I think, a totally valid question last time about why we needed 49 parking spots for 60 people. And I went back and evaluated that with my team and figured out the way they do the shifts. It actually has to do with the fact that our 60 people work four 10-hour shifts. So we actually need to increase our parking spaces by one, so it's going to go up to 50. But the reason those parking spaces work is that we have four 10-hour shifts and not people working eight hours a day. And that's why it worked. I sent Adam a little chart of... And I could put that up or resend it to if you want, Adam, but it just shows you how the parking lays out across staff. So we haven't provided excess parking, but we have a maximum staff level. We don't feel we need an excess spot. So there will be one additional parking spot. Paula, you've got a question I can see.
I do. I was trying to find my raise the hand button. So in regards to the parking spaces, have you reviewed Graves Engineering comments? Because they talk about the fact that several of the spaces need to be enlarged, and additionally, that when Phase 2 is constructed, you're going to need two additional handicap spaces.
We caught both of those, and those are good reminders, but they're on the list, for sure.
Okay, okay.
And yeah, so this was just to address... This comment was just to address the full count and why the number of spaces works, plus if we add one. But yeah, we'll definitely get those two in design, and those are helpful. I have to say his comments were super thorough and helpful.
Okay, good.
So, Adam, did you get my email yet?
It has not come through yet.
Okay. So I'll jump on to one of the things that's not in the email. I might jump around a little bit, but you guys probably get the View Cloud comments. We've had some back and forth with the fire department. They wanted to make sure that... So last time, we talked about the road and the turnarounds, and those are all fine. One of our questions for them involved hydrants and whether we needed them, and they do want hydrants. And we put some initial ones on a drawing and sent them in, and Christos Lekadides sent us his comments, and we're going to incorporate those. So we made some progress with the fire department. I think that's the last thing with them before we get to the building itself. So we've made some progress there. I don't know. Nick, you didn't include that, like, fire hydrant drawing in what we sent, what I just sent over, right? Those three attachments?
It was done. I don't think you're going to see it on this... No, you might on the 80-scale plan. I think it'll show up on the 80-scale.
Okay. So one of the things that Adam just will get hopefully shortly is an 80-scale plan. We could bring that up and look at the hydrants if you want. So on the photometrics, because we'll come back to this, we did a drawing to show you the view. This is the next thing I want to look at when it comes up on Adam's email. A view of the greenhouse from the neighbors. But we will do photometrics. We just don't have them done yet. So you asked for them. We'll do them. No problem. Let me give everybody a quick update on the wetlands, and this, I think, is in the updated drawing that we'll show you. We had a really good meeting with the cons comm. I know that's their area and not your area, but I think it's important to just kind of update you on what else is going on. Cons comm was very happy with our plan, I think, generally, but they wanted to see two-to-one mitigation of our wetland. We had shown one-to-one. So we're updating that to show two-to-one and increasing the wetlands. They also seem pretty pleased that we are connecting the two pieces of open space. So I think overall, all they... We have to go back to them one more time just to show them the numbers on the two-to-one, and then I think we're done with the cons comm. Signage while we're... Has Adam, Adam, has anything come up yet?
It's not come up yet. I keep refreshing it.
Okay. On signage, I guess that was one of the comments in Graves' set of comments. We don't know. We wanted to ask you guys a sort of a technical question. Which signage ordinances are we... Or zoning rules are we subject to? So we're agriculture, so we're as of right as agriculture, because we're right farm town. However, part of us is in a commercial zone, part of us is in a residential zone. Do we... Are we under separate signings, or do we have to follow the zoning that applies to the piece of the zoning we're in?
Where the sign is located is my understanding of what will dictate that. We can clarify that with Casey, because he would be the one who interprets it. But if you were to put signage on the building, it would fall into the residential sign code. And if you were to put it down at the entrance where you're meeting the Lunenburg Crossing parking area, I think that would fall into the commercial. But again, we can circle back with Casey and get a determination on that.
Okay. Okay. We're not going to do anything dramatic. We do tend to put kind of large signs along the sides of the greenhouse, but you won't even be able to see that from the road, I don't think, or from anywhere, so it doesn't, it won't be a big deal. So we do... The guidance we got was put it in the plan, because otherwise you have to amend the plan, so we will have signage in the plan. And I was just trying to make sure I knew which rules we were following.
So you...
Nothing yet, Adam?
You have a copy of the sign bylaw? You have a copy of the sign bylaw?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, there's different rules for each zone, and I wanted to make sure... I mean, in some places, agriculture is a sort of a blanket exemption to lots of things, but what I guess I was trying to clarify is that we're still under residential zoning for things like signage, and so we have all that. No problem. So I'll cover one last issue before we go into some of the new outputs that we wanted to show you. And it involves landscape screening. So the zoning bylaw says, and I'll read it. If I can find it here. The zoning bylaw for landscape says that we need to have... Plans need to address screening of the loading area, parking area, and driveway. Oh, that's not... That's in Graves' comments. I'm not going to read from the zoning bylaw. He just says plans need to address screening, and then he points to the code. And what we wanted to point out is that we're going to have about 150 feet, anywhere from 100 to 150 feet between our parking area and a lot line. And there will be brush and trees and kind of vegetation. Just, we're not going to take out anything we don't need to and leave the land vegetated as it is. So we're proposing not to do any special plantings unless, you know, there's some exposed circumstance that we don't foresee. And so we can show on the drawings where we think that vegetation will persist, but because there's already going to be lots left and a huge amount of space between us and lot lines, we were proposing just not to do any special vegetation around the parking and the loading dock. I don't know if there's any... If that's all right, I mean, I don't know if anyone has a question, wants to comment on that, but that's our proposal. We'll just put that in our comments to Graves unless anyone has an objection.
The key, the question that I would have is that actual delineation. What is the actual... I would want to see on the plan the limit of vegetation to be removed in accordance with the vegetation that's going to be there, and I'd also want to see a description of the type of vegetation. If 90% is less than six feet high, then that would be a concern to me. However, if there still remains a dense forested area, then not a concern. But I think there needs to be some quantification of the vegetation that's going to remain and what that delineation is.
Fair enough. Nick, we got that? Okay. So Adam, has anything come up?
I'm not getting anything.
There is a near nationwide outage of Microsoft services this evening. So depending how you sent it, or depending what it's... Oh, it's impressive. Depending how you sent it, or depending what it's traveling through to get to Adam, things may be...
We're all Microsoft.
Oh, then yeah. Sorry.
I'm Mac when everyone is telling me to. So, and there's just no way I can share a screen, huh?
Uh, let me see.
Do you have paper copies? You could hold it up.
All right, try it now.
Hey, it's going to let me. Okay.
No, it's disabled. You'd have to go into the Zoom. You have to go into... You would have to go into Zoom, into the Zoom account and enable screen sharing. So if you have the Zoom account information and password, you would have to do that, Adam, as the host.
It looks like it's going to allow me. I'll tell you in just one second. But I just opened the file, and it looks like it's going to let me do it. So I'm going to share now. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can.
So Nick put this together, and I might invite him to unmute to explain it, but I think I'll give it a first crack. So we're basically on a shelf, right? There's a bit of a plateau on the site. And so the drop-off to the... What's the left of my screen? I assume it's the left of yours, where we've got a basin down there. That's the natural flow of the hillside, and that's even... There's no neighbors over there. That's behind Walmart in Hannaford. That's where the hill drops off. The up... There's still more hill above us where we're putting the greenhouse. And one of you, I can't remember, one of you members of the planning board pointed out last time that a big hunk of our greenhouse is going to be screened just by the hillside. So you won't see... I don't think you'll see a car from the neighboring lots that are over on Chase. I think that's called Pope. No, Pope Road. You won't see cars there because that hill's too high. You'll see the top of the greenhouse. And again, we're going to do photometrics, so you'll be able to get a closer look at the light. But we wanted to show you some of the screening that's already happening. This will give you a good idea of both... Of the gradation or the grading and the vegetation. So that's just one response to the comments we got last time. I'm going to open up another file that Nick sent that I think will be helpful to update you. And if I don't immediately know what's new, Nick, you said the 80-scale one might have the hydrants on it. I'm going to...
Yeah, I think the 80-scale one, it shows a blow-up of the building area, and I think that'll show the new hydrant locations and the sprinkler connection for the fire company.
Okay. So, and we can send this out on email, and Adam, I always defer to you on what needs to come printed. I don't think this is the final final, because we're making adjustments as we go. But... Nick, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, it does show near the bottom of the screen the drive that comes around the rear of the building to the loading dock once stops moving there. You can see there's two hydrants located next to the driveway, and there's a... The line for the Phase 2, which the fire lieutenant asked us to install during Phase 1 with the hydrant also at the end of that drive. So we moved that to the end of the drive, and then the sprinkler connection to supplement the sprinkler system when there... In case there is a fire, is within 100 feet of the hydrant. the, the sprinkler connection to supplement the sprinkler system when there, in case there is a fire is within 100 feet of the hydrant as requested. So we, we, we did everything that the fire lieutenant had asked of us already. And that'll, that'll be reflected in our next submission as well. But I think we just wanted to show that we were, you know, as we were getting these comments from the fire company, that we were, the fire lieutenant in chief, that we were satisfying them as quickly as we could to get their approval.
Any other thing new that we want to note here, Nick? Has there been any other changes?
Uh, the rain collection reuse is something new that might, to, might be something worth noting. The parking layout, we've updated that. The, I think we showed a lot that we're, that we're, I guess is going to be conveyed to the town. That's below the, to the south, yeah, to the east bottom screen, below the basin there, there's a lot that we are showing now, it's an acre and a half.
And we'd like to do more on that. It's just, we might need some of this area for laydown, but eventually we may be able to convey more. That would be even, even more better connection. But this, this will provide plenty of room to get around the wetlands and connect the two bits of open space. And without having to put a, you know, one of those wood plank passageways over a wetlands.
Sean, also to the, the new wood line and vegetation line is shown along the grading. It's kind of the, the, yeah, exactly right there.
So that's where there's existing woods, right?
Correct. And that's where we'd be clearing. That's the point where the clearing or the grading would stop. And yeah, and that's about 150 feet to the, right in that area where your pointer was at, it's about 100, 150 feet width.
So we can, I don't know what we can do. Maybe we can even find a way to get pictures. But it's fairly thickly wooded there. We'll, we'll figure out how much screening is in here. But this is all pretty, pretty wooded.
Okay. A question for the, for the engineer, the, you doing this on AutoCAD?
Yes.
So I've, I've had great success in, in making an aerial photo, 50% transparent and overlaying plans on it? That you can, you can really get a stronger feel for the vegetation that exists?
Yeah, we have an aerial, we have an aerial. I just didn't turn it on this, on this exhibit. But we, we have an aerial, I think in past exhibits we've shown.
Sure. Now I was just getting back to about that, follow me about the, the existing vegetation being sufficient.
We'll do that. That's a good, that's a good call. That'll help us know how thick it is.
Yep. I have, I have one question. You had said that you've been addressing the, the fire comments. They had asked that you had clear distance around and they, they, it didn't sound like they liked the separation of the, the first and the second phase. Has that been resolved?
Yeah, we addressed that. I thought we talked a little bit last meeting, but we have addressed their comments and they were happy with what's going to be a grab. These are enlarged turnarounds in here that they wanted. That was a big, the, the big thing is they wanted to make sure they could turn equipment around. And then they understand that in phase one, this is going to be gravel because they recognize we don't want to blacktop it and take it out when we build phase two. And they felt as long as they could get around and we agreed to keep it clear of snow, that this, that was acceptable to them. And the same will be true here. They'd like to be able to get around and we have to make a commitment to clear it.
Okay. What wasn't, I, I thought I saw a comment that the building had to be connected for them to be satisfied with that. No?
The building or the driveway?
I, I think the building commissioner made a comment about separation between phase one and phase two and his read on the code. And he was looking for some input from their architect on the architect's code review and how that would apply to these two buildings, what was in there, fire suppression, fire protection and separation.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's going to come up when we go for our building permit, but I don't think it's a state plan level issue.
Okay, very good.
Nick, you sent one other exhibit I haven't opened. Is, should I open it? And are there things you want to point out there?
Uh, it's just the overall site. It, it'll show the wetland mitigation area that's been increased to two to one. Not sure what else it might show. That's, nothing's really changed too much that we can see. Yeah, I, I don't know if there's, I mean, other than the wetland mitigation, I'm not sure what else has really changed.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just give you a quick look. Oh yeah. So, so that is worth pointing out. So as you can see here, the wetlands is bigger now. And we can accommodate that. What else? Yeah, I think everything else is relatively similar to what you saw before. Again, we have a long checklist of things from, from Graves. But, and, and I, our schedule is to try to have that stuff in next week so that everyone has time to review because you don't have an early, you have a Columbus Day week meeting. So October 28th, I think is the next day we visit with you?
That's correct.
And it'll be a, hopefully a wrap up. We're going to try to make sure we get hit every, every point that's been raised and appreciate everybody's input today.
One, one thing I'd like to add, Sean, it's hard to see on, on the plans, but we did decrease the impervious pavement to the entire site. We decreased the drive. We decreased the parking area. The parking spaces that allow us to have 17 foot depth with pervious next to them. We, we decreased those to 17 feet. And then the other ones, they're uptight against curb is our 19 feet. We did do a lot to decrease the impervious coverage to the site. And we did, we did do that overall. We decreased that, which helps with a number of things. I just wanted to point that out because that's kind of hard to see on the plan.
Yeah.
That, that sounds great. I, I do have, looking at this, at this view, it, it appears that there's some grading shown outside of the lot line on the access driveway. It looks like maybe a basin or something. The tree line goes out around it as well.
Yep. Yeah. Yes, that's a, a basin. Yes, the basin to the, I guess it'd be the, the east or, or page, bottom of the page, towards the bottom of pages is, is over top of the lot line. Probably have to do a stormwater easement for that, for lot one. If, if that would be satisfactory.
But lot one doesn't exist currently, correct?
No, yeah, correct, correct. Yeah, these lots, this is one big lot. There's going to be an A and R plan coming up next month with the plan.
So you could either adjust that lot line or you could speak to the current property owner about getting those easements put together.
Correct. I think, I think getting that easement put together should be a relatively easy thing. Steve Powell might be making that, that basin.
We have a hand raised. Mrs. Bertram.
Yes, yes, Paul.
Thanks. I, I just want to ask a question about the parking spaces. You mentioned that you've decreased impervious area by decreasing the size of the parking spaces. But in looking at the Graves engineering review, they talk about that a depth of 18 feet of, for the 28 passenger vehicle parking spaces was proposed, but they need to have a depth of 19 feet. And I thought I just heard you talk about 17 foot space.
The 17 foot, and I might be off on the number. I know, I think it's 19 if the parking space is pulling into a curb line. If you have, and I think this is how the ordinance reads, if you have grass or landscaping that the car is pulling into, you can decrease it to 17 feet because two of that feet is thought to overhang the grass area or the landscaping area.
Right, unpaved landscape space, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's, yeah. And it was something like that. So that's what we did. Anywhere the vehicle is fronting, a unpaved landscape space, we've decreased them to 17 feet. And then everywhere we're pulling into a curb is 19 feet depth.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Well, that sounds great. You're making really good progress. You, you still on, on track with your, with your timeframe that you wanted to?
We are. We're, we're wrestling a bit with, with some issues around, around, you see in different code issues, but I think we're, we're making good progress. So we then don't anticipate anything slowing us down for October 28th, which should be good.
Um, can you talk a little bit about the MIPA review? I didn't really understand what points you were trying to make in the correspondence we received. You talked about environmental modification form and the MIPA review. Can you just touch on that?
Yeah, and it's an area where we could use a little bit of your support, actually. So the, we, I've had a MIPA filing done and submitted in draft probably three or four weeks ago. And, excuse me, and I've had three calls now with the MIPA office. And the state has not decided which, how they want us to do our greenhouse gas analysis and whether we need to do one. And because they haven't decided, I can't file. Now, when you file for MIPA, you have a 30 day comment period. And then a, then there's, then the agencies come back and give you any comments and you have 30 days to respond to that. So there's a natural 60 day built in, or maybe sometimes a little bit longer, 70 day built in delay for MIPA. And I feel like I'm being somewhat unreasonably jammed in doing what I think, we're trying to be thorough. And I feel like we're doing all the right spirit of what's supposed to be done in MIPA. And I can't, I can't even make the filing because the state hasn't told me what they want. And so what we would propose to do, what we'd really like to be able to do, and, and we'll, we'll do all the homework that they send us. I mean, I don't mind that. But we really want to be able to start clearing the site. And if we, the only reason we wouldn't be able to, in fact, we wouldn't even need to worry about MIPA at all, except that if you need a state agency permit for something, you have to, you have to do MIPA. We need one state agency permit. It's for our highway access because Electric Avenue or whatever the extension of Electric Avenue is dumps onto Mass Ave, which is state highway. As a result, we need a highway access permit. That issue alone, that one state agency action means we have to file for MIPA. There's, and the only MIPA hurdle we pass is impervious surface. So all of these things are combining to, to, again, I don't mind filing for me. I love, I, I think that having good environmental regulations is a good thing. And we're, we're doing a project that I think meets or exceeds most things people see environmentally. But the state's not got its standards in place to tell me even what to file yet. So what I'd like to do is, you guys don't have any say over it, but I would like to know that, you know, at least people felt like I wasn't being dishonest or violating some understanding if we went ahead and cleared the site while we're waiting to do all the rest of our MIPA review. Now, what the MIPA folks would say is we might, we want to be able to comment on your overall plans and maybe our comments will cause adjustment. And they may indeed, but I don't think they're going to cause adjustment in the site plan because we've positioned this building very carefully. We've moved wetlands strategically. We've provided land to the town. Everything is set up in a way that satisfies really the town first. And I just can't imagine a MIPA comment that would change the way we would clear the site. That's the only thing we'll be doing in advance of full MIPA review. So that's what my comment was meant to say. And, and if I had any thoughts or comments or backing on that, it's just very frustrating to want to do the right thing and you can't even file because the state doesn't tell you how to do it.
If I'm not mistaken, Adam, they can, they can do just shy of clearing grub?
Uh, well, if they get our stormwater permit and they file the EPA stormwater permit, unless there's something within MIPA that would stop them, yeah, you're right. They could do just shy of clearing grub. So they could, they could start that process.
So wouldn't be able to do much great, couldn't do any grading, really.
But they could get their, they get their ECBs and all that stuff in place.
Yep.
Why couldn't we grade? There's nothing from the state that, that would, that we need to grade. Those are all local permits, right?
Uh, actually, yeah, you, you, there's nothing, you, you would need the EPA's permit. That's the only other thing.
But the, yeah, that's federal, right?
Correct.
Yes. That's the, that's the NPDES.
Correct. That's correct. We do have a resident with their hand raised, Pat Kelly.
Uh, yes, please, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, this is Pat Kelly, 117 Chase Road. And I do just have a couple of questions. I know from what I was hearing is that the hour operations are 24 hours a day, right? I'm wondering about the shipping and the receiving and the loading dock that's on the back of that building that faces the Chase Road residence. What are the hours for that?
Trucks would go out in the morning, probably 5:00 AM or so. They'll mostly be shielded from you. I think if you, I don't know if you saw the grades we were showing, but the, the, they're, I don't know if you'll even be able to see them. So that will provide a fair amount of noise. And there'll be probably a couple hundred yards from any residents or more. But 5:00, 5:00 AM, I think the truck out and they come back sometime in the afternoon.
Okay. So they're not running all night long in and out of there?
Heaven forbid.
Okay. Well, it's noise is a concern as well as just being able to see them. So I was just, yeah. And the other question that I had is around the, you've talked about the greenhouse itself is going to have light blocking screens. What about the outside lighting? What is, is that how right that would be?
Ms. Ms. Bertram has been on top of that. She's, she, I think wisely flagged that these could be issues for neighbors. So she's, uh, she's asked for us to do photometrics, meaning that we're going to do a, a little study that shows you the light that, that will produce. And we're going to have pretty limited, I think we're going to have wall packs, meaning just a, a light on a wall at the greenhouse. We're going to do kind of bare minimum, really just safety lighting. But we'll, we'll release us a little study, lighting study to show, to show the impacts. But I can tell you, based on what I've seen, this board's not going to let anything through that's, that's, that's too lit up.
Okay, well, that's a thing. That was pretty much what I had. I was concerned about the shipping and receiving and the lighting outside, so.
Sorry, my dogs are barking because somebody's here. But if you, would you mind, can I just give you, can I give you my email?
Sure, let me grab a pen. Hang on. Okay.
At my email is S as in Sean, and then the last name is O'Neil, O-N-E-I-L-L.
Okay.
At brightfarms.com. At brightfarms.com.
Brightfarms.com. Okay.
My dog is Darwin. But Pat, Pat, if you have any concerns, will you just email me if you have other questions?
Sure. Sure. Like I say, I, I kind of have a good general idea of where that is. We've lived up there a long time. So I know what the area you're talking about. I just was a little concerned with noise and the outside lighting.
I, I would be too. If we do this right, you won't notice us.
Do, do you know, are you going to have to do any blasting to get these buildings in?
No. There's a very limited chance we'd have to blast to get a pipe up from the, 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 the water company did this when they put the water tower up. And if you've been there a long time, you probably remember that.
Oh.
They blasted to get the water pipe up to the water tower. Yeah. You remember that?
Oh, yeah. We, we've been there before any of this was built. So been there a long time. Oh, yeah, we, we've been there before any of this was built, so been there a long time. Yeah, I mean, we, they blasted significantly for Walmart, so that's why I wonder.
Yeah, so they might have to blast to put a pipe up from the, for the water main. But because that's just one pipe, I don't even think that's going to be extensive. When I said water main, it's probably going to be the sewer, not the water. But we've done pretty extensive geotech analysis of the site and we might have some limited work on the, on the, in the, at the rock, grinding the rock down, but we won't have to blast any.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Anybody have any more questions for these folks?
I just have a comment on the, I know you're going to do the photometric study. You had also mentioned in your correspondence that you would include some photos from your Pennsylvania site. That would be helpful. And you talked about, yeah, and you talked about the blackout curtains. I'm assuming the roof panels remain open? Or do they? They do not?
No, the, the curtains cover everything, I believe.
Awesome, okay, great, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Have you guys got anything else for us tonight? Nope. Okay. Then we're going to continue this to a date certain, date and time certain? Which is?
Correct.
28?
Do you need a motion to add a factor?
26 October.
26. Do, do we need a motion to?
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to continue this hearing to October 26 at 6:30 PM, 6:35 PM.
Excellent, is there a second?
I would second.
Very good. All in favor, we'll have to do roll call. All in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye. Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Is Mr. Torgerson with us yet?
Oh, he's not.
Okay. Very good. Well, thanks again, gentlemen, and best of luck getting all your ducks in a row.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good comments as always.
All right. So now we have a board decision for Northfield Road, scenic road.
That's correct.
And that was in our packet as well?
Yes, it was.
All right, so I assume everybody's got their packet and let's see, I quickly read through it. It looks, I mean, it's basically minutes and so basically it's contingent upon the applicant adhering to the plan submitted and approved at our meeting. That seems to be the only condition. Is that correct?
That's how the motion was made, yes.
Okay. Was there any concern about that? Does some, anyone feel that we need more specifics on anything?
There was a specific, I guess I have questions and I'd have to go back and look. During the meeting, it doesn't really talk about the discussion relative to the plan. I'm assuming we talked about the location of the driveway and what the, what the rock, rock wall looked like. And that only the area that was damaged was going to be addressed. And it does say that in this decision. It says the applicant is committed to rebuilding the stone wall in the areas adjacent to the proposed driveway entrances. So I think that covers the concerns that were, that were talked about. But I just, I compared the minutes to the, to the decision and the discussion. And I just, I didn't have time to go back and look at the meeting, but I think that that covers the concern. I don't know if anybody had, had any other thoughts.
My only concern was the width of the driveways. And I was actually trying to thumb through because I had made some notes. I think the bylaw requires 15 or 16 feet of width at the road. I know we discussed that and I realize the driveway can shrink down once they exit the road, but I feel like that should be included in the decision because that's where the scenic road jurisdiction is, so.
So on lot A, it says 15 feet and lots one and five, it says 16 feet. What is the requirement? Is it 15 or 16? Are you looking, Adam?
I am. Oh, I'm not muted. I thought I was muted when I said that.
I also, while you're looking for that, I also think that the decision should actually refer to the plan either by date or by name or some type of reference because there's two plans out there that were submitted. And the decision simply says a more detailed plan was provided to the board. And the presented plan indicated two driveways and it talks about what the plan, but I think it makes sense to indicate who prepared the plan, what the date of the plan was, what the revision date was.
And unfortunately, none of that is on the plan. I can, I know it's Zoc survey. I don't think, I'll have to, I don't have the plan in my hand, but I can look tomorrow and I can glean whatever information I can from that.
Yeah, then I would want to attach it.
That's fine.
And attach it as Exhibit A and put, put that on the plan because there's no reference to. And so somebody going back later is going to try to figure out what plan was approved.
I'm not seeing a required width.
For general, for driveways in general or share?
It, it does say.
So I just pulled it up on Ecode and I think this is accurate. Section 325-5.12, the driveway shall be graded in accordance with 325-5-1, wearing surface applied and a width of at least 15 feet at the edge of the right of way.
Okay.
What, which number?
So both of these do comply with that?
Hold, but hold on, that, that's.
And that's just going off of Ecode, I didn't physically.
Yeah, but 325 is the subregs and that's for driveways within a subdivision.
Okay.
So there is no, there is no required width for a residential driveway in the zoning code.
Okay, so we just have the width.
And I, what I did was I used the widths that he had on the plan.
Okay.
And I don't want to say the applicant has committed to rebuilding the stone wall. I want to say the applicant must rebuild the stone wall in the areas adjacent. This is the decision.
I'm going to just put will.
No, I want to have must.
Okay. Must has the same, must and will have a, have the same authority. But if that, if you would like must, we'll put must.
I would like must. And you have an extra word in there.
Yeah, the in.
In, you don't need in.
Not looking to split too fine a point on will versus must, but should the wording be shall?
Shall, yep.
Shall, must.
Yeah, I mean, but it's six of one half doesn't another likely, but if we're going to split.
Yeah, shall is the best, yep.
So the addition of Exhibit A, the attachment of the plan and has committed to shall.
Yep. And I guess I have a question about the format of this decision. I mean, I understand including the discussion, but it doesn't really say. Now, I guess it does, it has the motion. But it, but the motion is made motion to close the hearing for Northfield Road.
And then on the final page, there's another motion to approve the application.
Okay, I missed that last page. Okay, so that's where I want the plan references in the motion?
Okay, well, I'll put it in the text and then I'll, I'll carry it through to the motion.
Okay. And I want, I guess I don't want the shall rebuild the wall just in the discussion. It was contingent upon, that was a contingency of the approval. So I think that should be contingent on the applicant adhering to plan.
The plan submitted and the reconstruction.
Of the areas of the wall.
And just to pick up on Paula's comment, I feel like our other, like when we do the special permits, we itemize out the conditions separately.
That's part of the motion, though. So the person making the motion conditions that motion on X, Y, and Z. And that was, that wasn't the way this motion was made.
Okay, it was made contingent on the wall and contingent on the plan. And, and I just, so I want the wall in there.
That, that's, it can be part of the motion, but it wasn't enumerated as conditions.
I think it was because when we, if you go back to the discuss, the plan.
I'll have to, I'll have to go and look at it again, but if I recall, you just made a motion to approve the scenic road and common driveway as discussed.
Right, as discussed. So you'd have to go back to the discussion and the discussion was that the stone wall shall be repaired. So that was really part of the motion. And I'm moving forward, I will be much more particular when I make a motion.
I would say historically, if you say something like that, we can include it in the motion. If you want to enumerate it as conditions, I move that we approve this with the following conditions, A, B, C, D, E, however many there happen to be.
But, all right, so, and I understand what you're saying, Adam, but let me ask you. When we do our subdivision approvals, you do it, you identify the findings of the board based on the discussions and the, and the input that the board provides.
Correct.
Not part of the motion. We don't go through with the motion and identify every finding and every decision.
But you do go through and identify every, every condition you wish to place on it.
Well, I believe we did that in the discussion as to the stone wall.
Okay, I, I can, if you want them laid out as a condition, we can do that. The way I recall it, and I'll have, and I can go back and watch it again. The motion was made, I said, is there any conditions? And the discussion was, no, there's no conditions. We don't, we don't have any conditions that we, we want included. Let's go.
But yet if you go, but if you go back to the, even in the discussion that's identified in the motion, that when you identify the discussion on September 14, you, it's captured even in the discussion that we talked about the stone wall and the commitment to repair the stone wall. So we definitely talked about the stone wall and the requirement or the commitment to repair that stone wall. If we hadn't, quite frankly, I would not have made the motion to approve it. So it's clearly a discussion point. If in fact it had to be a shall, you know, moving forward, then we can be more clear about that. But I, I just, you know, we're feeling our way through this process. And I'm not clear as to why the discussion of other plans doesn't follow this same format because in all the plans we've, we've approved, I don't remember having to go through and review. You know, we look at the findings, we look at, but it's based on discussions and certainly the stone wall was discussed.
I, I, I don't want to belabor the point. Historically, on site plan approvals, special permits, subdivisions, the motion enumerates conditions. And perhaps they're not all enumerated, but there's a considerable discussion about what the conditions to approval would be, what things are expected that aren't depicted on the plan or otherwise. And then the motion says the conditions we discussed or enumerates those conditions. And that is open for discussion during the, the motion after the second and then is voted on. So that's usually what I rely upon. Sometimes you may say, I move we approve it. And I'll say with the conditions as discussed and you'll say, yes. And there had been a discussion of, of including specific things as conditions. That wasn't the way I interpreted what had happened here. Again, I, I understand that the, the wall is intended to be included as one of the things to be done, which is why it was mentioned, we can include it in the motion if you want it called out as its own condition. We can do that. But historically, and even over the past year or six months, specific conditions have been discussed as a condition and were, were or are wordsmithed as to what that condition includes. And it avoids me interpreting what the board's intent is.
Well, I, I would like feedback from the other members. I would like it to be spelled out as a condition in the motion. It was contingent upon the plan, adhering to the plan and will identify that plan and, and that the wall be, and that actually is indicated on the plan, but it was verified in discussion that the wall shall be repaired. But I'm, would, you know, that's my opinion, but what does everyone else think?
Well, just to be clear, we're talking about the wall that was damaged during the logging, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
It's my recollection that, that that was volunteered during the discussion, during the hearing. And I don't know one way or another whether you had asked us the question while we were making motion or not, but I thought we had a discussion about, and isn't this specifically why we have this in front of us? That we were talking about having after the fact?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Matt.
Oh, I, I thought that we had a discussion at this meeting that we wanted to be able to put conditions on after the fact. And I thought that that was amenable to you, Adam, or was allowable. And I thought that's why we got this.
Well, no, what we talked about was the board closing hearings and coming, having deliberation, us drafting a decision in the office and then the board reviewing the decision and making a final vote. At the end of this hearing, you closed the hearing and made a vote.
Right.
So the board felt, I don't know if you felt strongly that there was only minor things to be handled. It was, it's not on the level of a site plan or if, if it just, it was, it was a new procedure and for whatever reason, we didn't get to that point.
Okay. I would, I would like to see it as a condition, but I also would like to be able to take, take the people at their word. However, that does not always work out. So that's, that's my feeling.
Well, from my perspective, I know we've had other projects where we've discussed particular aspects of the project. And I felt like we had an understanding with the applicant about the way things were going to be done. And then in the decision, it wasn't specifically called out that things were supposed to be done in an order. And so I feel like that has contributed to this discussion. But I think, you know, I, I feel very much like Mrs. Bertram feel. Mrs. Bertram feels with these decisions. I feel like we need to learn from our past mistakes and I think going forward, we should close a public hearing, but not take a vote until we have this in front of us. Because if we go back to the meeting record and if the motion wasn't specifically clear, then I feel like we voted without conditions, even though the intent was that we discussed all of this and it was part of a plan and so on. But I feel like now we're in a position because because of other issues we've run into that we need to be highly specific. So going forward, I think we just close a public hearing we and give ourselves time to deliberate.
And see the decision, see the draft decision.
This decision, call out all the specific conditions because, you know, I personally received emails and phone calls from a butters that were very upset about a project that was being done. And there was a very clear understanding on how that was supposed to be done, but because it wasn't written into the decision, the building commissioner didn't enforce any of it. Now, we're aware of the intent. The applicant has told us that, you know, we, that's the way I was gonna do it. And I'm sorry I didn't do it that way, but at the end of the day, the decision, I feel like we just, we need to tighten these things up so it's crystal clear. So, you know, I think we work with what we've got here, try to, you know, go back, look at it, see how it was motioned and conditioned and make sure that this decision reflects that as closely as possible and move on.
So I agree, I I agree completely with you, Tanner. Moving forward, based on this discussion, I think we don't vote, unlike we did at this meeting, we don't do the vote until we actually see the draft decision.
Is that a possibility, Adam?
Yes, that was, that was my solution at the original discussion about this is, is you have, you have 90 days from the close of the hearing to make a decision. So you have 90 days to deliberate.
So it's starting to sound like I called for a vote and shouldn't have. If that's the case, I apologize for the misunderstanding, but I like this discussion.
And I think in this instance, i- if it shows up as a condition on the decision, the applicant is not going to question or fight or fuss about it. It's something he openly committed to several times. And whether it's in the motion or as a condition, I don't think i- it's it's going to impact this, this specific decision.
Right. So for this one, I'd like to add a reference to the plan. I'd like to add that as a condition or as part of the motion or as a condition. And then moving forward, I think we've learned a lesson that we see the draft decision before we actually vote on the project.
I would, I would concur with what with the general group consensus so far. I'm, I agree 100% on all fronts.
Super. Consensus is good. So I'm looking at the plans that were presented at our last meeting. Their date of receipt, September 3, and they look like they're scans from a larger plan. Both of them. One of them, September 1. One of them, September 3.
I think three September is the final one because it has the offset from the Western property line of Lot 5.
And does it have the name of the engineer on it?
It it's got a star that says scenic road plan with a date and a scale. And you can see, you you can see the edge of a of a stamp, but you can't read the name.
Adam, can you read the name on the plan you have?
No, I I know, I know who did it because he's the one who did the A and R plans for the same property.
So I'd like to reference the plan and attach it. That's the way I'd like to do it.
I think, I think attaching it as Exhibit A is the the cleanest way.
Right. But a a more detail, so in the decision, a plant, you know, when you say applicant adhering to the plan, submitted September 3, date entitled scenic road plan and attached here to as Exhibit A. So that's then that would is, it it clears up any confusion about what plan.
All right. So there's two things that I'm hearing, the one about the stone wall and another about attaching the plan.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I don't.
Okay. So we need a motion to add these as conditions. Is that correct, Adam?
You can do a motion and vote. I mean, it's, it's just a discussion of of the decision, so.
I don't know that we need to, right? I think it's just a matter of editing it and then we have to come.
This is discussion of a of a of a of an open decision. And so we'll make the changes in the morning and we'll let you know when it's ready to be signed.
Very good. Hopefully, we can do them all at once with the the A and R we did tonight and this.
Correct.
Very good. All right. So are we good on this topic? Everybody?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So now we get to move on to special town meeting stormwater bylaw warrant article.
So being as the warrant closes tomorrow, and our last meeting was full, chock full of other things, I did up the draft warrant article and submitted it. We can still make some edits to the text. Last I recall, there was some discussion about potentially expanding.
To C. I'm sorry, to B.
It's
To B, yeah.
It's D. No, I'm sorry, it's E. No, it's.
Isn't it to B?
It is to B, but it's under letter F.
Okay.
Isn't it?
Well, no.
Nope, it's not under. Someone's letters and numbers.
I know.
It's E, it's E to B.
Tanner, what would you like?
Uh, well, I just wanted to make a quick comment and I know that we, this has come up at a previous meeting. I can't remember when, but in speaking with somebody at the Central Regional Office of DEP, Mass DEP is in the process of working out their regulations to come into, I guess, compliance with the federal standards to try to build some consensus among all the regulations. And their advice was to wait until Mass DEP is on the same page with the EPA before you adopt more local laws. And I guess they've extended the deadline for our filings.
It was, it was supposed to be done originally by June 30 of this year. It's been extended to June 30 of 21.
Okay.
I don't expect that DEP's regulation manual will be ready prior to Springtown meeting. Because I think the last time they did it, it took them three to five years. And we've had lots of discussions about this and and it's all part of a move for the Mass DEP to take primacy of stormwater permitting. So EPA issued the Phase 2 permit in 2000, well, I think it was 2018. And DEP co-signed it. And the intent is that for the next Phase 2 permit, DEP will be the issuing authority and they'll be the enforcing body. But there's a a huge shift that has to happen within the agency to ramp them up to have the staff and structure to be able to do that. And the the regulation alignment is part of that. And they have a working group that's that's in the process of doing that. But again, it's a, it's a longer term project. I think this working group has been working for maybe six. I think they started just before COVID started. So they've been at it for six or eight months. And I I think they had, that the what I've heard from from various people is it it will be a several year process.
Okay. I mean, her thought process was that it should be done relatively quickly, but you could ask 50 different people and get 50 different answers when it comes to these things. A lot of times, I just want to try to avoid a situation where we go to town meeting with our bylaws, adopt all of this, and then Mass DEP comes out with their new handbook next year. And now we're going back and changing everything all over again. And then you've got projects that have stormwater permits that are halfway through and okay, well, they were permitted when the regs were this and now the regs, it it just, in my mind, I just wanted to bring it up as a word of caution, that's all.
And my understanding is that these, these regulations that we're proposing are what DEP is moving towards because this is what comes straight out of the federal permit. So where they're looking to align with the federal government, this is the federal government's regulations.
As we understand it today.
Correct. A- a- as is in the 2018 permit. The DEP co-signed.
Yep. So I just wanted to bring it up as a talking point, so to speak. I just didn't want to put us in a position where we go to town meeting, we get something adopted, and then we've got to shift gears and more.
Right. So based on what Tanner's saying, and if I understood you correctly, it's June 30. So if we held off on this from November, rather than going forward in November and went in May, what's the reasoning behind going in November?
Uh, if it doesn't pass, we have the ability to sidestep, reshuffle, reassess, and take it back to spring.
Okay, okay.
Now, I don't know how much reshuffling can be done, whereas the the regulations in there are copied out of the the permit. And that's what what our goal is to meet the permit. But it would at least give us the opportunity to have two chances if if something were to happen and it weren't to pass.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense. Let's face it, we had that problem before.
And if it were something the board just wanted to do, and it wasn't mandated, I would completely understand saying, hey, let's, let's hold off and see what's happening with this other thing. But where it's mandated, I'd like to have as many opportunities to ensure that it passes as possible.
Well, I guess my only comment there is if we're not gonna substantially change it and we're just gonna bring it back a second, third, whatever time, I, I've never been a big fan of that. I feel like when you go to town meeting, you present it. And if it doesn't pass, you don't keep going back to town meeting, asking for permission that for something that was the same thing that got voted down the last time.
And I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that it would give us the opportunity to look at it and change what we can change, if we can change, to have an opportunity to present it in the spring. I want to have as much opportunity for what needs to get passed to get passed, not necessarily redundantly bringing the same thing, but looking to address the potential concerns that are outlined at town meeting and and be able to have a second shot at it rather than take it once, have it get shot down and then have to go to EPA and say, yeah, we couldn't do this. And so we didn't fulfill our regula- our our requirement within the permit. Now, if we tell them that we didn't do it, they're probably not going to go nuts and find it. But if it's something that we can pass, the, it's all the better.
Yep. Well, and I guess, I mean, fortunately, we do have a bylaw now. So it's not like we would be a community that doesn't have anything whatsoever. So at least we have the bylaw as it stands now. And I've always been a fan of Springtown meeting. I know Fall Town meeting is mostly zoning stuff, but especially bylaws like this where it has an impact on literally every property in town. I that's, and seeing with the whole virus thing, I feel like turnout at Springtown meeting this year was pretty dismal. I would expect fall is gonna be pretty poor as well under the circumstances. So I don't know. I I guess I have mixed feelings given the COVID-19 situation and the fact that these regulations in particular, unlike a lot of the other stuff we proposed, does have a big impact on townwide. It's much like the earth removal stuff, you know. But that's my only comment there, so.
All right. Did we figure out the reference that we were trying to find before this presentation?
So we were talking about the low impact development and I honestly, after looking into it and looking at what some other communities are thinking, I think it makes more sense to look at in, at incorporating a low impact development bylaw or regulation. But I don't know that making reference to it in this document makes a lot of sense. I think the saying that low impact development, site planning and design strategy must be implemented if practicable. I think that covers us. And then I think we we may eventually want to look at developing a low impact development regulation or bylaw, but I don't know that we need to tie it up into this.
I had.
Good, good.
I had previously expressed some concerns with some of the numbers we were using and the fact that they were based on uh, prior, prior data rather than projections going forward. I'm dropping that concern because I have not been able to find, while projections may exist that don't feel like pulling a rabbit out of a hat, I could not find them. And I'm not big on legislation being magic.
Good. Good. Yeah, I think, I think we have in the past discussed and had a, had given preference to incorporating an an ally, a low impact development bylaw separate. And I think that would just reassurance of that. Yeah. So I'm not seeing an F in here.
It's E. I apologize.
I'm seeing E contents of stormwater management.
It's E too.
Okay, but I, but it goes from E to G, erosion, sedimentation control. Is there a major section F? Yeah. I don't see one.
Okay, I'm gonna have to go back and just look at that lettering. I may have forked on the lettering.
Okay, no worries.
Because what I had to do is take the hard copy and go back and take the existing and go through line by line. I've got double E. That's the issue. Contents of stormwater management plan should be F. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Anybody else, anything?
So so Tanner, I'd just like to understand where you stand on this. Do you think it makes sense to move forward now or would you prefer to wait till May?
Uh, I prefer May because I feel like Springtown meeting is a better venue for anything significant. I mean, my discussion with Judith at Mass DEP seemed to lead to them getting all their stuff lined up with the EPA and being able to put us in a position where we could meet the deadline, but I'm not gonna hang my hat on it, so to speak. And like I said earlier, my concern there is I, I don't want to keep going back to town meeting and changing regs and have projects. and have projects in limbo. I'd feel much differently if we didn't currently have a stormwater bylaw, but at least we have a bylaw and a permit process and so on.
One of the things that I see is a real advantage of changing this, though, is the increasing the ninety the current requirement to the to increasing it is the ninety percent, which is the standard for removal of total suspended solids. And I guess I would question whether, if we don't change this, do do the regulations stay at the lower, the eighty percent? Adam?
Yes.
Okay, so so I gotta be honest, I I I I see some disadvantage to waiting um, because the 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 state recommendation and is recommending the ninety percent removal. And I think if we hold off and projects move forward, we're not going to achieve that. Um, and I'd also like to understand, if it doesn't pass in May, where does where does that put us with compliance with regulations?
I mean, we're not in compliance with our permit if it doesn't pass by June 30th. Now, EPA has a has historically and continues to tell communities, if you didn't do something, tell us why. So if if in our annual report, we said took stormwater bylaw to May 2021 town meeting, vote failed to pass, they're gonna say, okay, you've done it, you've done the work, but you didn't pass. Now, take it back and get it passed. Uh, they're not gonna say, okay, well, it failed, you guys can just keep your old one. They're they're gonna look for us to find a way to to get that passed. So it it there would end up being a a repeti- a repetitive petition, just when it was. And and, you know, if we fail in May and we don't bring it back again till the next May and it fails again, they might start to say, well, what's going on over there in Lunenburg? I, you know, i- i- it's all kind of unknown how they'll exactly approach it. But we are required to have the bylaw and the bylaws required to have certain uh standards within it.
And that is a ninety percent total suspended solids. So there's a requirement for the three hundred foot of a butters list. Is there a requirement to notify them of hearings? And where would that be?
Well, I I I don't know that it necessarily explicitly says we're going to notify a butters, but the butters list within three hundred feet, along with two stamped envelopes for each unique butter contained in the list, butters located in other communities within three hundred feet of the property boundaries must also be included.
Right, but but so what is that implying? Is that implying that we're gonna notify the butters?
That's how we do it. They give us stamped envelopes, we stuff them with the proper notice, and we put them in the mail.
Okay, okay. So we they will get notification, that's really my question.
That but yes, by including the stamped envelopes, that's the intent.
Okay, and currently, we don't have a fee for stormwater permits?
Uh, we don't, we charge them the special permit fee.
Okay.
Just like two hundred bucks.
Okay, so this is a hundred dollars an acre?
Correct.
Is that on top of the special permit fee, or is that?
No, that's a new, that that's a fee just for stormwater.
But is it, is that in addition to? You said we just, we just charge them the standard two hundred dollars for this.
Well, because there isn't a special, there isn't a specific stormwater fee. So because it's currently, the word special permit appears in the the stormwater bylaw. And historically, it had been a special permit located in the zoning bylaw. We've extrapolated that to mean until it's changed, it's still a special permit, and we we charge the fee based on that. If this passes, we would just be charging the hundred dollars per acre fee.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
So for me, the disadvantage to to waiting would be that we don't have, we don't impose the uh the additional pollutant levels. And there's a lot of verbiage in here that I think makes the bylaw cleaner and clearer and incorporates a lot more protection for the environment, which I like. Um, but I also understand the point that going before with a bylaw in November and then having to change it again in May doesn't make a lot of sense.
Uh, who did you speak to at DEP, Tanner?
Uh, Judith Schmitz.
Okay, uh, let me call Judy and see what um you know, specifically what she her thoughts are. Uh, she's our circuit writer. Um, she deals with our conservation administrator a lot, so um I I can get in touch with her and sort of get an idea of what that that looks like from her perspective.
Yeah, and I mean, that conversation was like two weeks ago, something like that. So it it was pretty recent. So but that that was just her advice. You know, and I agree that I I feel like the what we have in front of us today does clean up um quite a bit of things. And I, to the extent that we can adopt it now, I I'm I see the intent there. I just, I want to be careful not that we go through uh back and forth on this. Um, and um, I also, in terms of enforcement, it seems to come up in a couple of areas that the town, but it doesn't specifically really identify a person. Um, and the the one particular area that I was a little bit concerned about was um, it's close to the end. Um, so under um enforcement and then P is orders. Um, so the the enforcement agents under N are the building commissioner in conjunction with the planning board. Um, conservation DPW director shall enforce this bylaw. And then orders, number one, it says in conjunction with conservation and DPW may issue a written order to the building commissioner to enforce the provisions of this bylaw. I guess my question there is, it to me, it seems um like there's a lot of misdirection. Um, you know, if I'm the building commissioner and I read this, I feel like, well, I only do that in conjunction with planning and a written order from the planning board. So if if there's an issue on a site, my understanding here is that we would need to make a written order to the building commissioner and tell him to enforce this.
That's what it looks like.
Right, so I don't, I don't know if that's a clean way of doing things. Um, in my mind, it should sit pretty squarely with primarily the building commissioner. But um, because I would anticipate that most stormwater permits are gonna have a building permit of some kind. And so he's gonna be on site anyway, and I don't feel like he should need a written order from us to enforce any provision of this bylaw.
I I think you're right. I think that isn't, that does need to be cleaned up.
And I guess more specifically, my concern would be situations where um people proceed with projects without a stormwater permit. Um, how does that work?
I I mean, it, to me, it would say that 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 would fall under N because it says in conjunction with the planning board, conservation, DPW director shall enforce this bylaw, regulations, orders, violation notices, and enforcement orders, and may pursue all civil criminal remedies for such violations. Uh, the way I read P is that, and again, this is what was existing in the bylaw from 2007, uh, is that if the planning board or the conservation commission or the DPW director or and the DPW director find violations, they can write orders to the building commissioner notifying them of violations they have identified.
But I don't think we need that, right? Because we could still do that. We can just send a letter. We can't write an order to require him to enforce it. We can send a letter saying, hey, I think there's a violation, but ultimately, he has to determine if there's a violation. Because he's the zoning officer, right? We can't.
Well, but this isn't a zoning bylaw. This is a general bylaw.
Okay, but I don't know that an elected body can order the building commissioner or the zoning officer to do something.
Um, well, I mean, I I guess that is something that we'd have to look at. Uh, I I mean, if you want to alter this, then we're we're either talking about trying to do a special meeting or holding off until the spring.
We've got at least.
Well, town meeting is November 17th.
So we do have two meetings before it.
We don't have two meetings because we don't have a a first meeting in October because it's Columbus Day.
Right, so we've got one in October and the first one in November.
Correct. Well, uh, so I guess if you're talking about a floor amendment, yes.
Well, I I think either way, we we need to put it on the warrant and we can withdraw it if we need to, decide to. Um, but we have only really got one meeting to make correct changes.
I mean, at this point, it's on the warrant.
Okay.
So if we make changes on October 28th, is that enough time for the for the meeting, or do we make changes on the floor?
I I don't know. I don't know when they're gonna print. Usually, uh, it's probably too late uh, because usually it goes to print a week or more before the two-week required distribution. Because if I'm not mistaken, the warrant needs to be at people's homes fourteen days before the meeting. So you're twenty-one or more days out from the meeting as a final uh date for any any changes.
So do we have a special? Do we have a special meeting?
Uh, it looks like the 27th of October is twenty-one days. So my inference will be that sometime 21, 22 October is when um that packet will go to the printer.
You know, the other thing is, is if you talk to Judy and she says, we are going forward, then we may decide to hold off on this entirely, and then we can just pass over it. But otherwise, if she says, no, it's not going to be ready for a couple of years, personally, I would like to go forward because I think this puts better environmental protections in place. And it brings us into compliance with the recommendations for the NITDs permit. Um, but I think that if you if you were able to talk to her sometime this week and touch base with her, and then if if it looks like, you know, yes, it is gonna go, i- it's gonna take a long time and we should go forward, then we can arrange for a special meeting. That's kind of where I'm at. I don't know what everybody else thinks. Because then we'll have to clean up the language before before that, the week of the 19th. Matt, what's your thought about another meeting?
Um, I don't have a problem with another meeting. It it's it's um, it's more work for the people behind the scenes, um, but it this is, this is important, and I think it's important enough. Um, so I wouldn't have a problem with it.
I don't have any issues with having another meeting. You know, I I guess we could wait for maybe some written feedback from Judy at Mass DEP just to kind of bring us up to speed on that end of things and then decide from there how we want to proceed.
I have no problem with uh extra meetings whose job is to make actual quality legislation and do good work.
There you go. All right.
Adam, your thoughts?
Uh, I'll talk to Judy and get back to you guys.
All right, um, just uh on a clerical note, the uh the second to last page, the N is supposed to be a Q, I think.
And Adam, are you gonna rework the enforcement part or talk about that with the building commissioner? Or where do we go with that? Or are you looking for recommendations from us?
I I I'll try and put something together. If you have a recommendation, feel free to send it to me.
Okay.
Um, but I'm sure I can figure something out.
Okay, great.
And uh, one one last thing on the on the very first page, uh, we get the definition of an acre.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not the Lunenburg acre. Is that gonna have any uh weird interplay with the zoning acre versus?
No, because I mean, this this doesn't have anything to do with lot size. It's just how much disturbance you're performing.
Good. Very good. All right, everybody comfortable?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Excellent. So then we can move on to the A and R process? So Adam, what are we looking at? We had, we had a long discussion about how this.
This is the updated draft.
Yep, so we had a long discussion about how the uh.
So I left, anything that's crossed out in blue was taken out of the original draft other than I think what's in paragraph A. Uh, and then anything that's underlined in blue is added from the previous draft.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So I read through it and I thought the draft looked good. I don't know what everyone else's thoughts were. I didn't have any things that jumped out at me.
I was very comfortable with it, but I recognize I'm still developing my eye for this kind of work, so.
Everything that we talked about, I think, was added. My big things were the border health stuff, and I think that you captured that. You've got the topography at the two-foot intervals. Um, the endorsement on the right-hand corner. So Tanner, I know, I know you have some concerns about um A and R and the in our current process. I don't know if it catches everything that that you wanted to see.
Yeah, no, I think it has most of it on there. It, the only thought I had um primarily because we saw an A and R tonight that didn't have the driveway located. I, in my mind, a driveway is a structure. Primarily because we saw an A and R tonight that didn't have the driveway located. I, in my mind, a driveway is a structure, but. I don't know if we could clarify that.
Was the driveway left off? It was unclear to me. Was the driveway left off of that plan or was it out of, uh?
It was out of shot. The, the building that was on that plan is a barn. And the residence is further to the east on Northfield Road. So it was, it was off of the plan from where, uh, they were depicting.
And my only point with that is that, I mean, part of our review process primarily through the building commissioner is to. Ensure that the A and R as we approve it doesn't create any non-conformity on. The remaining land. And the only way you're going to be able to ensure that is to have all that stuff featured down. Tonight's plan, you know, it was on the other side. It wasn't shown, which. In my mind, the plan should have shown the entire parcel. But, um, so maybe that's another thing we need to make clear.
Yeah, and you know, and I, I think that. I, I thought the same thing when I looked at it. And then if. You think about the scale that would have been required to add that additional five hundred and sixty-some-odd feet of frontage. The, the, the part of the lot that you were really assessing would have been much smaller. And been more difficult to, to read. Uh, and, and I can only infer that that's the reason that they did it that way.
Yeah, I just, it's just food for thought, so to speak, more than anything else. And, you know, in those situations where you do have a massive parcel. Maybe we get the entire view and then. They can always zoom in and give us a separate sheet that shows more detail. Just to, for clarity purposes, but.
And I understand, I think that if you use the locust map, that covers that. And, and I, I get what you're saying. I think with. Adding sheets to A and Rs, um, something that this board has recently and historically looked to do is try to be as minimally impactful on. I'll say normal people, uh, and sometimes normal people are the ones doing A and Rs. And, and adding in a second sheet can, can increase the cost. To a degree that can be somewhat uncomfortable to people at times.
I was wondering about that, if that would carry an additional cost burden that could be. A, a problem for exact, for the, the people who are doing an A and R because they're. Because it's a family thing or something.
And, and it, and it could. To the, to the driveway point under number eight, we could include frontage. Divisions of all lots created and dimensions of any frontage remaining on the original subdivided parcel. Including the area of subdivided parcels with the structure and any access points. Uh, if that was something you felt strongly about. Or any driveways or.
Well, and I'm more concerned about the driveway on the remaining parcel.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So including the area of any subdivided parcels with the structure, comma, and any access drives.
Yep, I think that.
Yep.
Would clarify that quite a bit. And in terms of adding to the cost, I, you know, I certainly. Sympathize with that viewpoint, um, because I do realize that a lot of the A and Rs we see are pretty. Simple and straightforward, two neighbors trying to, you know, correct a property line or something like that. And I wouldn't want to. Increase the cost to those individuals. But the other thing we're running up against is. The lots are getting more and more complicated, you know, easy to develop lots have been gobbled up. And, um, now we're left with parcels that have more difficult terrain or, you know. Weird lot lines and it, they're carving up parcels that have existing houses on them. And all the infrastructure that goes with it, drainage easements, utility easements. And so I just feel like. Trying to incorporate as many of those details on the plan so that when we're looking at it, we can. Have a good understanding of what's going to happen, um, makes sense, so.
The, the only other thing I had on the, on the, um, draft, and I don't know that it makes sense to include it, but it's, um, number. It's on the last page. I've lost the numbering. On the last page, um, number two. When you talk about the original copy of the plan shall be returned to the applicant who should file it with the Western Northern Registry of Deeds and you eliminated the within ten days. Had that discussion last time.
Yeah.
And why? But we also talked about what happens if they don't report it within three years. So it freezes zoning for three years. If I understood what you said, it freezes.
From the date of endorsement.
The date of endorsement. I just don't know if it's, makes sense to put that in just as a sort of a caveat. Or.
Statutory.
It's statutory?
It's within the statute, yeah. So, I mean, that, that's, that's the governing legislation in mass general law that, that codifies that. And I'm glad you mentioned the ten days because, you know, I've thought about. I was thinking about that a lot after we had our last meeting. And if someone didn't record it in ten days, we'd have no recourse.
Right.
With a, with a subdivision, the board can at any time. Call a public hearing and alter or rescind a subdivision. You can't do that with an A and R. Once you've endorsed it, it's endorsed and it's gone. It's, it's done. You, you can't. Unless they come to you and request additional divisions or modifications. So, um. I, I think part of why I, you know, first of all, we weren't enforcing it because we couldn't. And I think that's a big reason why I was, I was advocating for it coming out.
No, I, I agree with it coming out after our last discussion. I just, you know, I. I'm just still concerned about that three years, but hopefully the building commissioner will look at when the plan was endorsed and.
Yeah, and, and that's. And it's all, all contained within the statute.
So it doesn't go on file with the assessor's office until.
You get a copy of it.
Recorded.
That's correct.
But they don't make that division.
That's correct.
System until it's recorded.
Until it, until it hits the registry. And generally, so if I went in tomorrow and recorded a division. It's probably not going to reflect on our GIS system until February or March. But once the deed hits, they do, I believe they do like a monthly deed or plan search and they will. They'll start assessing it that way through that time.
Okay.
Yeah, the assessors, they get your money. They're always the most active.
Uh, and the other thing was, um, just the application packet. We went through and just sort of updated that a little bit. We sort of beefed up the border health compliance sheet just because it was. Limp, I guess, would be the best way to describe it before. Uh, and we updated just the, the cover sheet with the procedures. So. Now the Board of Health will actually be filling something out that has some information on the property on it and it gives them the. The place to make comments and, uh, hopefully it'll be a little bit easier for them to get that done beforehand.
We asked for seven copies of the plan on the cover sheet, but I thought it says thirteen copies of the plan and the regulations.
If it does, it should only be seven.
There's ten.
Oh, it says ten. It should, and it, ten is the correct number. It should say ten on the, the cover sheet. Thank you.
Yeah, I knew they didn't match, so.
And.
And so the, the Form A two, right?
Yes.
So number six should be ten?
So I got those. Uh, and, and the hearing will cover both documents. Because the, the forms are part of the rules and regulations as well.
So, uh, we, we're requiring ten of the, the plans and the Form A?
Yes.
Okay, so neither the regulation nor the procedures say ten Form As. Right? You both say.
Form A at original and it should say nine copies.
Okay, so in the regulation.
Yeah, I just got that and under one first bullet point. Thank you.
Yeah, and then, so there's, so there's two changes to the A and I procedures cover sheet, right?
Correct, and one to the, one to the draft section.
Very good. Thank you.
So are we ready to vote on this with those changes or?
Yeah, we'll have to advertise a hearing, but yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're not going to vote on it until after the hearing, right?
Correct. So we'll, we'll, well, I'll make those changes. I'll send them out to you. We'll advertise for a hearing on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And then we'll make sure we distribute this to all the, the local engineers that we deal with.
Excellent. All right. Excellent. Any further discussion on the A and Rs? Okay, hearing none. We got two minutes approval. So we've got three, set to minutes?
Can we do them in a group or do we need to vote on each individually? Yeah.
We've done it in mass before. I don't know, but if the hearing is a different story or not.
Well, I will, I will make a motion to, I'll do it individually because I think Adam stepped away for a minute. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Second. Who, who's that?
Tanner.
Okay, very good. Um, so this is going to be a roll call vote. Um, all in favor?
You're going to call us.
Oh, that's right, they do, don't they?
That's how a roll call works, I think.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram.
Aye.
Mr. Brenner.
Aye.
And I don't think Mr. Torgerson has joined us yet again, still. Okay, so, one down.
An aye from you, Mr. Chair?
And an aye for myself. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I would make a motion to approve the September fourteenth, twenty twenty, uh, minutes for the Northfield Road, Holman Street, um, west. Is that right? Northfield Road, Holman Street?
I believe is the parcel identification.
Okay.
Tanner, second again. Okay, roll call vote and I will call the roll. Uh, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Miss, this Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Very good.
And I would make a motion to approve the September fourteenth, twenty twenty minutes for Bright Farms, three sixty-one Massachusetts Avenue.
Second.
Tanner, second. Okay, roll call, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent. So now we are moving on to committee reports. I don't know if I should mention the email we got yesterday now or if we should wait. I'm not sure you even got it, Adam.
What email?
I got an email from, um, Mr. Cole. Requesting not to be the member of TCP Building Design Committee any longer.
Hmm.
Do we want to wait and talk about that later? I mean, we're going to have to. Fill that. Right? But we have to have it on the agenda to do so?
Uh, yes, you will have to fill it and I think it would be best that it's on the agenda so that we can, uh, vote on it without recompense. You can certainly discuss it since, uh, when the agenda was posted, you were not aware that that would be, uh, an item that would come up. Uh, but I would be more comfortable if it were on an agenda for you to vote on.
Yes, I agree. All right, so. I guess we'll just skip over for the committee reports and we'll talk about it at the end. So Stormwater Task Force still has not met. Um, the Agricultural Commission, we met, uh, a few days after the last meeting of the planning board. We had penned a letter to, uh, town officials, interested parties, um. Discussing the bylaws statement of, uh, what, animal complaints, farm and animal complaints. And the, uh, the right to farm. Bylaw specifically outlines, uh, a process and we're just, we just made a letter to distribute to different people involved in that. To let, to make them aware of that regulation. And we've got two farmers markets left, the next two Sundays from ten to one. We had twenty-two vendors. Yesterday. So the market is going well. Is there a report for the last meeting of the TCP Building Design?
Uh, yes. Um, so we met, um. Last week and. We will have an article for, um, Fall Town Meeting, but it's simply an update. And the architect is working on trying to pull together as much detail as he can in terms of renderings and. Uh, layout and so on, um, to present at town meeting. But there will not be any financial, uh, impact, so to speak. In other words, there, there won't be a vote on funding the project. Which I think makes sense under the circumstances. In general, I mean, the, the projects, um, moving forward. The Boys and Girls Club will be occupying a portion of the space. The Lunenburg Lions will have their food pantry there. The school will have extended day and their, uh, adult continuing education program. In the wing of the Passios that's closest to the middle high school. And then the superintendent's offices have been moved to the opposite wing. But at the last meeting, the superintendent. Didn't. Make a formal request to be moved out of the building, but is certainly not opposed to it. Um, so one of the concepts that was discussed was the Boys and Girls Club vacating their building. Moving to TCP and then the superintendent's offices being located in the Boys and Girls Club, uh, building. So. But that's. Kind of the gist of where the project is in general. I think some of the challenges moving forward for that build are certainly going to revolve around parking, traffic flow. You know, and they're, they're developing different schemes on how to try to manage that situation. But they're not that far along just yet. Uh, one of the things that was discussed was creating parking behind the buildings. So basically paving what is now the gravel parking lot, uh, nearest the middle high school. Uh, which was a construction staging area for when the middle high school was built, but then extending a roadway all the way around the building. Coming out behind the library onto that access road that runs behind the library up to the senior center. But there's a fair amount of engineering that needs to be done to figure all of that out. So.
Very good report. Thank you. Open Space Ad Hoc Committee.
All right, so I have a lot and I apologize in advance. So we met on September twenty-second. Uh, and there were a number of things that I think are of interest to the planning board. Um, as you guys will recall at the last meeting, I mentioned that on the right of first refusal for two hundred and fifty Howard Street, we had recommended. The town pursue acquisition. The prospective owners then approached the Open Space Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And they are willing to, um, grant or gift two point seven-four acres of the property. To the town, which will allow the, the protection of the, of the critical habitat and continuity of conservation land. So.
Um, so basically, the the division of the property would be 200 feet from the Mulpus um, would be would be gifted to the town, and the remaining property would be developed. So the intent of the property owners is to come forward with an A and R to this board um, to divide that property, the remaining property, from my understanding, will comply with zoning. Um, so we should be expecting to see that, there is going to be a placeholder article on the special town meeting warrant, but the hope is that all of this will be worked out before special town meeting, and, um, then it will be passed over. Um, the other thing that came up is, um, we had several Conservation Commission came forward to Open Space and asked for a couple of parcels to be turned over to Conservation. These are parcels that were taken through the tax title process, um, and have been in general municipal lands for some time. Um, and the two parcels in question are 111 Mulpus Road, which is a landlocked piece that is six acres, and then 970 New West Townsend Road, which is also a landlocked piece of 3.2 acres. Um, and the Open Space Committee did recommend, um, to the Board of Selectmen that those two parcels be turned over to concert, to be care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Um, moving forward, the Open Space Committee is asking all of the, uh, is recommending that the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen allow the Open Space Committee to work with the other, um, land use committees and departments to take a more comprehensive look at all the parcels that are currently identified as general municipal lands. And if you look at the Open Space Plan, um, this is one of the goals of the Open Space Plan, and all the parcels that are currently in general municipal lands, which are typically lands that, um, have been taken through the tax title process, there's also one large parcel, which is 671 West Street, which was acquired by the town for a school, which was never built. Um, but they're all teal color in the Open Space Plan, um, but we'll be sending out a letter, um, asking to to move forward of taking a more comprehensive look at what to do with those parcels. Some should go back on the tax rolls, some should be potentially turned over to Parks and Recs, some may make sense for, you know, other departments. So we really want to take a look at that list of land. Um, so at the October meeting, we're going to be really kind of narrowing down into that list. Um, the Bright Farms property, um, which was on the agenda tonight, and I was happy to hear the mention of continuing to move forward to gift that property to provide connectivity between the Reno and Saliba parcel, um, so that's, you know, we still recommend moving forward with that. Um, the Economic Development Committee, no one from the Open Space Committee is interested in serving on the Economic Development Committee, however, one member did reach out to a local um, business owner, um, who actually, um, owns a community, a community-supported agricultural business in town. Um, and they potentially are interested in serving, um, but I don't want to name that person until I have confirmation that they want to serve. Um, but our reading of the charge is that it can be a designee of the Open Space Committee, not necessarily a member of the Open Space Committee, so I I think we're okay if if that's who we recommend. Um, that's really the the big things that came up, two other things that just came up in public discussion that I thought the Planning Board would be interested in is that the Parks Commission, um, there was a member of the Parks Commission in attendance, and they indicated that one of their goals for this year will be to start working on the rehabilitation of Marshall Park. Um, so that is something that they're moving forward with, and another thing that was mentioned by a member of the Open Space was concerned about the sidewalks in various areas of town, I know the selectmen are moving forward with MRPC to, um, improve sidewalks in in a small area of town. But there was general comment that of a desire to see that expanded to other areas, so it may be something that at some point the Planning Board may want to take up, and and may be an opportunity to use ELTA funds or, um, UPWP funds in the future to look at sidewalks and and a more comprehensive approach to sidewalks. Um, but that's really it.
Excellent.
Mrs. Bertram, if I could just ask a couple of questions on the parcel end of things. Is there a reason why these parcels should be in the care and custody of the Conservation versus any other group, like is there a motivating factor in terms?
They're landlocked, they're landlocked parcels that are completely surrounded by conservation land, they don't have any direct frontage. Um, so, and they're surrounded by conservation, so it makes sense from a from a habitat perspective, from a continuity continuity perspective, um, oh, and I forgot one, so that's the reason on the 111 Mulpus and the 970 New West Townsend Road. Um, there was, you know, talk about possibly others, but we didn't feel that moving forward with others made sense because you want to look and and entertain thoughts of all departments, but those two made sense to us, and we were approached by Conservation because of their proximity to to conservation land and the fact that they are landlocked. Um, the town manager also taught, um, mentioned some other parcels, um, to Open Space to look at, and one of those was 671 West Street, which is a very large parcel, but the town has been approached by, and a butter, the selectmen have been approached by an abutter to convey a 100 by 150 foot section of that parcel. Um, this is a parcel that has previously been divided by the town, um, through a vote of town meeting for to allow small portions of the property to be added to abutters. Um, and after looking at the parcel, looking at the, um, division, Space felt that the addition of that 150 feet section to the to the abutter made sense and didn't pose a problem, so we did recommend approval of that. Um, so there were actually three parcels we recommended conveyance.
Okay, I, the thing that concerns me a little bit with some of this is I know other town parcels have been sold off, the most recent one I can think of is the old Parks and Rec building, um, the storage building on West Street. And that particular parcel was, if I recall correctly, about three quarters of an acre with town water and town sewer, and it was sold for $35,000, which in my opinion, a buildable lot with town water and town sewer should bring a lot more than $35,000. Um, so, and I also question a little bit, in my mind, that these seem like decisions that should be going through either planning or the Board of Selectmen and overseen by elected?
Right, these are recommendations, these aren't decisions, these are recommendations, so the selectmen came to us looking for recommendations, or Conservation came looking for recommendations. So these will be recommendations to the to the Board of Selectmen, because you're right, we can't, we can't make decisions, we can just make recommendations.
Well, and ultimately, the decisions I would anticipate need to go through some form of town meeting.
You know, that came up, and and actually, I'm interested to see this article because it was mentioned by the Chair that at some point in time, the town voted on at a warrant article that allowed the selectmen to convey property without town meeting action. And so I I want to get a copy of that vote because I thought that only town meeting could convey property, but apparently there's some article out there, and one of my charges is to get a copy of this from the town clerk that allows the selectmen to convey property.
Okay, and I mean, I guess that's more of a question for town manager or town council in terms of procurement laws and so on, it just, eh, from my perspective, I think a lot of this makes sense, but it just, you know, seeing how some of the parcels have been sold off and it at lower values concerns me a little bit, it also concerns me to hear that, you know, abutters are specifically buying these parcels without the open market. You know, if I own 100 by 150 foot piece of land down on West Street, I'm not just going to market it to an abutter, I'm gonna list it with a real estate agent and try to get top dollar for it. Um, so, eh, those are my only thoughts there, but I guess we'll have to see how it all kind of plays out.
I I don't disagree with you, Tanner, and that's why the Open Space Committee really wants to take a more comprehensive look at these parcels, so I would I would think that we might want to put this on our agenda, um, for a discussion, because we are going to be looking at all those general municipal lands, the Open Space Committee, but we want to work with Planning Board, with Parks, with the Selectmen, with Conservation, with everybody. Um, you know, public safety, the schools, everyone, and and but we have a whole bunch of land that is not on the tax tax rolls and not being utilized, and does it make sense to 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 put these to use? So that's one of the things that we really want to do over the next, you know, six months to a year. Um, so I I think from a planning perspective, we certainly would want to take a look at that list.
Yeah, certainly.
Can we get that on the agenda? Adam?
If I have the list of properties, I can put them on the agenda.
They're in the open, you, they're in the Open Space Plan, identified on a map. Um, but if you if you do a search through the assessors for general municipal land, it will come up.
So you'd like to add a discussion of general municipal land to the agenda?
Yeah.
Do you want to try and do this at the next meeting?
I don't know that we want to do it in October. I I don't know.
I I I would agree, I think that the next meeting is probably going to be fairly full with Bright Farms, uh, are you hoping to do this prior to town meeting?
No, no.
Okay.
Um, a letter is going to be going out to the Selectmen and to the Planning Board, you know, asking, or, you know, asking for support of taking a comprehensive look at general municipal land. Um, so I don't think it's anything, you know, critical. Um, I know the Open Space Committee is going to start the discussion at our October meeting, but no decisions are going to be made, and no, um, you know, it's just going to be a general discussion.
And it's Open Space.
I would like to bring back whether or not, um, the Planning Board is is interested in taking a more comprehensive look at the at at general municipal land, and I'm hearing that I know Tanner is, and everyone else's thoughts?
Yeah, I I'd like, I'd like to, there's, there's a few things that, um, there's a few things about land ownership of the town that I, um, would like to have a discussion on.
And is Open Space sending this letter?
Yes.
So do you want to wait for that letter to come to put this on the agenda so that we're discussing it in the vein of of how it's framed?
Right, I think that'll come in the next week or so, so, but I would wait and probably till the November meeting.
All right, that was one of the longer committee reports we've had in a while.
I I told you, I apologized before I started.
Thank you very much, um, so are you finished?
I am.
Okay, uh, so the next is MRPC, Mountain Regional Planning Commission.
MRPC has not met since our last meeting, they meet this Thursday, and I'll be there.
Excellent, and MJTC, the Joint Transmission Committee.
Uh, they have also not met since our last meeting, there is no October meeting, the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 10th, not the 11th because, uh, Veterans Day.
Very good, and our Capital Planning Committee member is not with us tonight, so we won't get that. Um, so then Director's Item, Master Planning.
Uh, just wanted to update you, we have the contract in place with, um, Donahue Institute, uh, I have, uh, email chain going back and forth with, uh, the woman who's working on the project, so that is underway and should be wrapped up, uh, before the end of the year.
Super. Super, um. All right, so we, uh, we've got our next meeting coming up at, uh, October 26th. Um, sounds like it's going to be, uh, hopefully nearing the end of Bright Farm. Um, remote participation until further notice? Um, public comment. Are there any hands raised?
I do not see any.
Okay, um, board comments. I have a couple, so if anybody wants to get something out.
Well, I I will raise that, um, in trying to peruse as many town committee meetings as possible, I went through the Capital Planning Committee very quickly, and it seems uh, the Planning Board representatives, uh, and I believe that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen is looking for uh, some commitment from the Planning Board that their representative will attend meetings or, uh, a possible replacement of of that seat?
Well, the second one is an option, but I don't think there's much we can do about the first one.
No, I I I agree, and unfortunately, he's not even here tonight to
Exactly.
to have that discussion with.
Well, um, okay, well, we need to, we need to find somebody else for the TCP Building, and that'll be the agenda for, will that be on the 28th?
Yes, 26th.
Okay, so I guess maybe we can have a discussion about the
Both of them at that same night.
Mm-hmm. And can you reach out to to Mr. Torgensen before that, Adam?
I will do my best.
Okay.
Um, so a few things have come up fairly recent, um, the, um, actually, what was that first email from April? From from, uh, Conservation?
Uh, yeah, and I I really don't remember seeing it back then.
Either, but
And I mean, he he forwarded the email, so he he did send, I just
So apparently, we received, Adam and I both received, uh, an email from Conservation back in April requesting, uh, some input about the GIS hours that we get from MRPC. Um, and I I I, uh, I responded to him yesterday that we would have a discussion about it tonight. Um, and I I think we get, what, six or eight hours?
I believe it's eight, it might be 10, but it's no more than that.
And and what do we typically do with that?
Uh, the past few years, Conservation has used them in in response to these trail grants.
Oh, so this is just the continuation of our
Yeah, i- i- it's it's something that has been done in the past, um, and and they've done a lot of trail updating. Uh, we don't, we have, we haven't, um, used them for whatever reason, uh, and it's really just putting together maps, uh, I think we've used them in the past for, uh, the creation of the APDC map, uh, stuff like that, you know, little onesie twosie stuff that, um, is relatively quick and easy to do. Um, eight hours of GIS can get some stuff done, but it's not a lot to really put any power use into.
At one point, I think there was some interest by the Stormwater Task Force to, um, do the catch basins and some of the the sewer infrastructure.
Correct, and that's actually covered under our contract with, uh, the current consultant who does that, so they've actually been mapping the system as part of that, and they've been doing the drainage outfall inspections, and that all kind of uh, folds in together.
Yeah, and and I believe the majority of that has been done already, too.
Uh, yeah, I think the there's a heavy lift somewhere of mapping the pipes that they haven't done, um, connecting all of the the structures and outfalls, but I I think it's a 10-year project that they have built in.
Okay, so the the point of the the discussion here is that the the, um, Conservation Commission has requested the use of those hours from the Planning Board in conjunction with their 26,000-plus grant for trails?
Correct.
And I'm not sure if we need to actually have a vote on it, or if we can just talk about it, or?
I I think you can, I I think ultimately, town manager signs off on, I think, out of, um, uh, deference, the the Chair of the Conservation Commission reached out to you and I just to make sure that the Planning Board wasn't putting in some requests uh, that might supersede his.
Okay, so is anybody aware of anything pressing?
Nope.
I, yeah, I don't have any issue with it.
Okay, well, then I would, I would make a recommendation then to the town manager to transfer those GIS hours. transfer those GIS hours over to conservation for us.
I'll, uh, get that off in the morning.
Excellent, thank you very much. Um, and also catching up, we've had some long meetings and I've been forgetful at the end of some of them. Um, we, uh, the board of, the, the select board, excuse me, has decided to, um, come back with the liaising, I guess, so Mr. Dwyer, Todd Dwyer is gonna be our, uh, planning board liaison. Um, in, in watching that meeting, their, their intention is for the liaison not to be a participant, but to basically just bring back comments and notes and to, to the select board. Um, I know in the past we've had, um, we've had a few different individuals, um, and each person's been different. Um, some people, uh, generally regularly come to the microphone and partake and some people just fly on the wall, um. I personally don't have a problem with a liaison from the select board uh, being available to answer questions if we had some certainly, but, uh, if they had, uh, some input, I wouldn't mind that either, but um, in, in these COVID times, you don't have to be at the meeting to report on the meeting, so um, it will probably be a little bit different than we're used to, but I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, that, uh, we are, we are, we, we do have a planning board committee report, select board now, right, I think?
We're being liaised.
We're being liaised, but doesn't that mean they have a committee report?
I, I, I think it's sort of similar to, uh, I think it's a hybrid of what happened before and what happened, uh, after they eliminated it. Um, I think people are assigned to individual committees and if there's something that would be of general interest or, um, there is an ongoing item like Bright Farms, they're, they're looking for a, uh, quick uh, synopsis of it, not a, a retelling of, of the meeting, was the way that I was to understand.
Just so everybody's aware, um, and, uh, I also have received communication from the conservation commission that they recommend that we revise our charge to not ask them to recommend someone.
What?
They don't wanna be on the EDC.
They don't wanna make a recommendation.
On the economic development.
Correct.
Um, and I'll, I'll also add to that, that, um, the agricultural commission has had discussions about it and if we do talk, start talking about making revisions to that, then there was interest in removing the business owner.
So no one wants to be on the economic development committee?
We've got two people that are waiting very anxiously to, to start meeting.
Okay.
So we really only need one more person to start that, but we ultimately would like three more.
Okay, so hopefully this, this person that I mentioned from open space, um, it sounds like she's interested. So I'm, I'm hopeful that that will actually happen.
Okay, that would be great. Um, that would be great. Uh, I, I, I've, I've been reaching out to all kinds of people, um, and it's just, it's really hard to get a commitment out of people. Um, so another thing that's come up in the, uh, agricultural commission, uh, and I'm wondering, I think I've mentioned it here, uh, a few times at least, uh, the, um, there's mass general law for a public market. Uh, or after the town reaches 10,000 population, we can put that on the warrant and vote it in. And I didn't know if that would be something that interested this group uh, in trying to pursue, or if this group would have an interest in trying to assist the agricultural commission in doing such, or if you had any input whatsoever on it.
This is not something that's come up since I've joined the board, so could I get the, uh, dime store version of?
Yeah, I believe it's mass general law, section 40, chapter 40, section 8L. It, it's, it's for public market and it's a very short, I think it's four lines, uh, for, for chat for MGL, it's pretty short. And basically it would allow us to to have a brick and mortar, all year round location for, uh, an indoor market. And it, there's a few of them, like Boston has one. Uh, Worcester recently, I think they're almost done building theirs, I'm not sure. Uh, and I would not expect anything extravagant like that for Lunenburg. However, there are all these reuses going on in town and there are a number of viable locations for such. Um, and I, um, accepting the, the general law does not have any financial impact whatsoever because we can accept it and never do anything about it. But if we don't accept it, then we really can't plan for it. Uh, I brought it up at the TCP BDC. Um, uh, I've mentioned it, I think before even that group had been formed. Um, there, there's a number of town off, town buildings with kitchens in them and large spaces. Um, and I just, I wanted to ask this group if there was, if, if we thought that was something that was in our wheelhouse.
I, I, personally, I completely support that and would be in favor of adopting that. Um, and it's something that I think absolutely makes sense for Lunenburg is to have an all-season market. Um, so I, I am definitely on board. I, I don't know what the planning board role is, but I think it absolutely makes sense.
Okay. Um, so I have been asking around, I mean, you need, it, it doesn't make sense to do something like, like that without having people that would be participant. And I've asked a good number of the vendors at the farmer's market and if that was an option that was available to them, they could have offerings during the off-season. Um, some of them would, would open up their greenhouses and start eating them, uh, earlier or, or all year. Uh, some of them would, would plant and sow differently. Um, so there's the option there. Um, and there's, of course, there's plenty of craftsmen artisans that, uh, can do stuff all year round. Um, so that's good, I'm glad to hear that. Um, and then the one more thing, I, I'm pretty sure that this would fall under, under our group tier. Um, it, it might be three years now ago that we got the million doll, not less than a million dollar bond bill, I believe, for streetscapes, building facades, the LNM gas station and a community kitchen. Now, if we don't make a plan for it, then we're definitely not gonna get anything out of that. I brought this up in numerous places and with numerous people and numerous groups. Um, I had opportunity to speak with, uh, with Dean Tran. I think it was last year and we discussed this and he strongly encouraged us to come up with some sort of plan or at least a small portion of that, at least. Um, so we, we also specifically included the TC Passios in the area of the, um, the village district.
Can, can we get a copy of the, so was this a grant application, Matt?
No, this was a, I, I believe the correct verbiage is a, a bond bill. So
It, it's legislation that gets passed at budget time that sets aside funds that the governor may or may not ever release. So it's a, it's a bond bill that would be funded through proceeds of bond sales at the state level. And if he ever decides to release the funds, he can.
And I'm pretty sure it was 2018.
Yeah, a- and I know that, uh, the LNM has been the subject of a lot of testing recently as part of the brownfields program through MRPC. They've done, uh, ground penetrating radar and identified what's underground. They've done, uh, monitoring wells to test for contamination, uh, and I believe, uh, either uh, in the next few days or, uh, maybe it's the end of October, there is a final report that will be issued on the work that was done there. And this work was all done with the intent of the town finalizing the taking and then looking to either acquire cleanup funds through, uh, a variety of agencies, I believe, one being mass development and either cleaning it and selling it or, um, working with mass development and an end user to fund a cleanup through the grants. So if there is money for, for either cleanup or, um, other, uh, work to it to put it back on the tax rolls, that might be something that we're moving closer to a plan for.
Okay, so that was one of the three. Uh, another of the three was a community kitchen, which is a community space. Uh, and the third one was streetscapes and building facades, and I'm pretty sure it was specific to Main Street, Lomster Road in Lancaster Ave. But I couldn't be mistaken on that. Uh, and we have, well, I think the bond bill is only good for five years.
Yeah, I believe it's that, that's what it is.
Yeah, so I was gonna bring up the fact that potentially town hall is gonna be vacant and Ritter Building's gonna be vacant, but I think that, I don't think the timeline's gonna match up that we could do something like that. Uh, anyways, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, so there was a number of things. Does anybody have any questions on anything that I brought up? All right.
Oh, I'm, yeah, my only comment would be that I support the public market idea, um, especially seeing as how we can adopt the, um, law without committing to investing money in it, at least it puts a position to do so if we choose. Um, I had two quick things. One is, um, Mrs. Bertram, you mentioned like a list of parcels. Would you email that to me or?
Let me see, I, I got it just through you and the assessors list, but let me, let me, let me investigate and if I can locate it, I'll am, email it to Adam so he can send it out.
Okay, and I guess it, the ones I'm most concerned about are the ones that are like on for this town meeting and like active business, not so much, you know, what we may be looking at six or 12 months down the road. Um, and then my only other, um, comment was I would like us to explore the potential to organize some type of formal meeting for land use. I feel like a lot of the projects that we have going on, especially projects the size of Bright Farms and I noticed that they broke ground on the solar farm over on Electric Ave. Um, with this type of work going on, I feel like it would be beneficial to have a meeting with the building inspector, conservation, you know, a member of planning. Um, not frequently, but at least maybe once a month. Um, I don't know what the other board members feel about that, but I think there's a lot of, um, permitting and regulations that we're responsible for and I feel like it would provide a good opportunity to make sure that things are done in a inclusive, comprehensive manner and we don't have projects moving forward that might have gotten approval from one board, but not another. Um, I know of a couple of residents that have tried to move projects forward and have been issued a building permit only to find out that they needed a notice of intent from conservation. And next thing you know, they get a cease and desist and so on, and I'm just looking for a way that we can make things better for the residents so they don't get in these aggravating situations where they apply for a building permit, pour a foundation, frame a building, and now they've got a cease and desist. I, you know, from the applicant standpoint, I look at those situations and I can only imagine how frustrating it is for them to go through the whole process only to be issued a cease and desist, which in my mind, you know, has gotta be very, um, aggravating and stressful. So, um, I don't know how the other members feel about it, but I feel like it would help close up some loopholes.
I know that Matt had expressed, uh, an interest in having a meeting of the chairs from the land use boards. Uh, and I did reach out to all of them. I heard from two. One was all for it, one said, "Yeah, maybe. Let me know what everyone else says." And, and that was sort of the extent of, of that, so I can, I can try and rally that back up again. Um, I, I don't know that the building commissioner could be compelled to attend any meeting like that. I think he probably would attend. Um, if asked, uh, and, you know, then you get into when and, and, and when do you meet? Because, uh, I don't know that finding a night that everyone of those groups can meet is gonna be successful. I, I get, I, it, it, I think it, it makes sense. It, uh, I think there's some logistical, um, gymnastics that needs to happen.
One of the things that I, as a member of the board of selectmen years ago, one of the things that I was all in favor of was having a chairs meeting on a regular basis. And we had a few of them and they were actually very interesting meetings, a lot of work got done, a lot of communication between the departments. A lot of duplication of effort was eliminated, a lot of better communication. Um, one of the things that came out of those meetings was the, the sign-off sheet for the various departments. And I don't know what the process is anymore because I'm not there any longer, but the sign-off of the conservation, the sign-off of the tax collector, the sign-off of the various board of health, um, before the issuance of a building permit. And I thought with this new permitting system that we put in place, that that was all done electronically. So I'm surprised to hear that we're still having problems with people moving forward with projects and putting in foundations. Excuse me, without conservation commission approval is happening because I thought we put steps and protections in place to prevent that. Um, but I'm all for more communication to the different boards. So I, I for one, think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and who, who knows, maybe I'm just a lightning rod for this stuff, but I feel like it, once a week, somebody comes up to me and says, "Oh yeah, you know, this guy, he put a shed up." "Oh yeah, he, he got a cease and desist," you know, and so it just, I, I understand that some of these people are probably proceeding at their own risk and realize that they may be doing something wrong. But I know of two specific situations where the resident called the building inspector's office, asked what they needed to do, went through the whole thing and then were issued a cease and desist. Um,
By the building inspector?
Uh, conserving.
Just to be, I, I just wanna comment that a shed doesn't require a building depart, depending on the square footage of the shed, they may not require a building permit.
Yep.
But that doesn't, that doesn't exempt from the other boards, cuz I know that, that, that happened too.
Yeah, but, but that's, and so I'm just looking at it from a situation where, you know, what can we do to get everybody on the same page? So if somebody calls the building inspector's office, they get the answer, "You don't need a building permit to build that shed, but you may need to go to conservation and I suggest you talk to the conservation administrator" and verify that first, you know, um, just so people get clear answers. Because, I mean, to me, it's, it's really frustrating and I can understand that, you know, we can't compel the building commissioner to attend the meeting or compel him to do every, anything. But at the end of the day, we're issuing a lot of site plan approvals that are based on plans that he is the enforcing agent and I, I feel like there isn't a lot of co-op, co- cooperation between what we're doing and what the enforcement side of things is doing. Um, and so I'm just looking for a way to kinda get everybody on the same page because it, we've obviously got issues. I mean, a person should not get a building permit to build a 30 by 50 garage and then get a cease and desist. Like that shouldn't happen in my mind, ever, period. I mean, this isn't the first building permit that was issued in town. So like, we, we gotta work on the process somehow. And that's the only solution that I could come up with is to get a lot of people together to say And that's the only solution that I could come up with is to get a lot of people together to say, you know, this is what we need to do, just so the residents have a good experience. It's, you know, I, I feel bad for the residents because I know what it's like to go through that whole process. You know, a lot of these people are getting home equity lines and borrowing money and starting projects. And now all of a sudden you're halfway through, you're dead in the water and you're out all the money. So.
I agree.
All right. Well, I'm encouraged to hear that Adam got two responses.
That's the last time.
It's more than, yeah, yeah. I, I think the last, I think the last push was Greg, but no.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, we had a lot to say and we've still got, we still have more time. If anybody else has anything else to add. No. Okay. I would accept a motion then.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cole, second. Any discussion about adjourning? Roll call. All in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you all very much. And everybody in the background, behind the scenes, thank you.
All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.